I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council Meeting of May 17, 2016. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Here.
And Madam Mayor Patino?
Here.
First item on our agenda this evening will be a proclamation, and Councilmember Zuniga will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the City of Santa Maria has always supported the role of the Department of Public Works as a vital ingredient into the community and an integral part of the residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed community is vital to the continued operation of public work systems and programs such as the production and delivery of clean water, wastewater collection and treatment, stormwater collection, treatment and control, streets and highways, public transit, public buildings, fleet services, and solid waste collection and disposal, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public work officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, hereby recognizes the week of May 15 through 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week in the City of Santa Maria, and calls upon all residents and civic organizations to acquaint themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works and to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. And Mr. Springer was sharing with me before we met this evening that the gentleman who's receiving this is an exemplary employee and has been with us for a long time and really has a passion for our buildings and our streets and our community as a whole. So, accepting the award is, or the proclamation is Mr. Richard Dupree.
I'd just like to say on behalf of all the employees in Public Works and also the Utilities Department, thank you very much for this recognition.
Thanks, Mr. [inaudible].
We thank you very much. Next, we have another proclamation. I will be making that presentation. The proclamation is recognizing the month of May 2016 as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month. Whereas Huntington's Disease, HD, is a rare genetic and fatal brain disease with psychiatric and movement manifestations, the symptoms of which include cognitive impairment, behavior and mood disorders, and movement disorder. And whereas Help for HD International, founded in 2010, is a nonprofit organization with the mission to educate the world about Huntington's Disease and bring vital, incredible information, education, and resources to the HD community and awareness to the general public as well as medical professionals. And whereas, through its next-generation approach to advocacy and education, utilizing multimedia, Help for HD International is partnering with other organizations to facilitate a stronger unified advocacy platform for research, science, and care, ultimately to improve the lives of individuals suffering from Huntington's Disease and their families. And whereas, this proclamation honors the memory of all those who have fought and lost the battle of Huntington's Disease and juvenile Huntington's Disease, and shows support for the families, caregivers, medical professionals, advocates, law enforcement, and first responders who care for those inflicted by Huntington's and juvenile Huntington's Disease. Now therefore, I, Alice Empatino, Mayor of the City of Santa Maria, do hereby recognize the month of May 17, 2016, as Huntington's Disease Awareness Month in the City of Santa Maria, and encourage all residents and businesses to learn more about this rare disease. In witness thereof, I here to have set my hand and caused the seal of the City of Santa Maria to be affixed hereto this 17th day of May, 2016. And here to receive this is Melissa Biliardi, founder of Help for HD International.
Mayor, Honorable Mayor Alice Empatino, councilmembers, city workers, leaders, I just want to thank the City of Santa Maria for this proclamation. It's like a badge of honor, and it's a privilege to serve the community since 2010. I want everybody to know that Huntington's Disease families suffer tremendously, generation after generation. And if you happen to meet somebody with Huntington's, please send them my way and be kind and helpful to them. Again, thank you for this honor, and I'll continue to do my work and serve the community. Thank you.
Next, we have a commendation, and Councilmember O'Rourke will be making the presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And then I'm going, with the approval of the mayor, I'm going to preface this resolution with personal words because this, Donna Walcott is who the resolution is being presented to. I've known Donna for a lot of years, and the proclamation doesn't state all of the things that she's done for this community in Santa Barbara County, and she served seven years on the county's Civil Service Commission. And I first met her with the United Way of the Central Coast many years ago. And prior to our Community Development Block Grant Committee being formed, the United Way of Central Coast Allocation Committee did the same process. And then we went to appointing, meaning the council, individuals to represent us and do that function. And Donna took that on many, many years ago. It's really hard to believe. So anyway, here is the resolution. Resolution number 2016-52. Resolution, the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, commending Donna Walcott for her retirement as a member of the Block Grants Advisory Committee. Whereas, on January 16, 1996, the City Council approved the formation of the Block Grants Advisory Committee as a formal standing committee operating under the Brown Act, with each council member making individual appointments. Whereas, the duties of the Block Grants Advisory Committee include assessing community needs, conducting public workshops and hearings, reviewing applications for funding, and making recommendations to City Council for the allocation of housing and community development grant funds. And whereas Donna Walcott served with the highest degree of integrity as a dedicated member of the Block Grants Advisory Committee for six terms, it says totaling 18 years, but I think it's actually 24 years, six terms, and I happen to have served that many terms. And during her tenure, participated in hundreds of hours of meetings, site visits, deliberations, presentations, and study sessions. And whereas her civic commitment has strengthened the committee, enriched the city's public participation process, and greatly benefited Santa Maria and its residents. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Santa Maria, California, as follows. Donna Walcott is commended for many years of dedicated service to the City of Santa Maria community and wishes her the best in her future endeavors. I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number 2016-52.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 26-52. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Yes.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Passed and adopted. Okay. Donna has her little sister, her best friend here.
Right. Well, today, I was adding up all the years that I have served on allocation committees. And I remember that when I got off of the county commission, Karen Corderay came to me and said, "You really should go to the Santa Maria group." And I thought, "That'll be great." When you're serving with the county commission, people don't always see eye to eye. And I thought that once I got onto the city commission, it was gonna be a piece of cake because we were all Santa Marians. We all wanted the same thing. Well, that isn't exactly the way it went, and a lot of it because I'm very stubborn and have my own ideas. But I think the thing that I thought that was most important today was to tell you of, in the 25 years, some of the wonderful changes that have gone on as far as our nonprofit community. We have our own shelter now. We also have a transition house where people that are ready to be independent with their families can go and stay there until they've reached the point of being able to go into their own rental. I think that that's fantastic. We're giving these people a hand up and not a hand out. I don't think that anybody, anywhere, could come close to the marvelous shelter system that we have in Santa Maria. Also, under the guidance of Chair Robert Dickerson, our marvelous staff, and of course, our empowering City Council, we now have the wherewithal to financially help families transition out of the shelter into their own rentals. And we're doing that by a program that the committee put together, the TRB, which is the Rental Assistance Program. And with that, we loan them the money that they need for the deposit. A lot of times, they have worked while they're at the shelter, and money has gone into an account so that they can get a place of their own. But getting first and last is somewhat difficult for them. And so the committee has put this program together where we help them, and then they, in small payments, repay the money. So it's a win-win. Let me see, what else? I could go on all night about Santa Maria's nonprofits. The way they have been able to stretch a dollar is unbelievable. One more. Dave Quelo from Catholic Charities. He has come up with a gentleman that will work with especially some of our older seniors that are having problems, or we might say down and out. Dave has put together a gentleman on his staff that works through these different paperwork and all of the different things that they have to do to be able to receive their social security. A lot of them didn't even realize they've been on the streets for so long that they were entitled to social security. So this gentleman goes through with them and makes all of that possible. So I think, of course, I think Santa Maria is fantastic. I'm a native, raised in a family who always said, "Not so much to do what you want people to do for you, but more of a thing of doing for people the way you want them to do for yours." It's easy to say, "I want people to treat me the way I..." I will treat people the way I want to be treated. But it's more of a thing of treating people the way you would want them to treat yours, your brother, your grandfather, those kinds of things. It's the sort of thing that my mother always stressed, and we listen to forever. Thank you for this.
Thank you, Donna.
Mr. Boyson?
Donna, I just have to tell you that your strong voice on the CDBG Committee is gonna be sorely missed. I can tell you how many times I've sat in your deliberations, knowing that I had to heed our city attorney's advice and keep my mouth shut. But I just wanted, several times, I wanted to stand up and just say, "You go, girl. You go, girl." You epitomize what we need, the spirit that we need to have on all of our committees in the City of Santa Maria, and especially on the CDBG Committee. You really get what is needed by the, you know, the needs of the neediest within our community, and it truly is obvious, I think, certainly, everybody up here that it comes purely from the heart. So, thank you so much for your service. I know we haven't seen the last of you, but thank you.
Well, Donna and I served on the Human Services Commission together on the county, and so I know how difficult that is because after each meeting, when you go down south, you just want to give up and you just want to quit. But you've hung in there for a long time, and I thank you so much for what you've contributed to the City of Santa Maria. People don't realize what a difficult job that is. It's probably harder than sitting up here, what you guys do. So I certainly appreciate it. I know everyone up here does. So thank you, Donna. The next item on our agenda this evening is public comment period. Madam Clerk, would you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of the agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on the agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request to speak form. Madam Mayor, we have two requests.
We have two? Okay. Ann Cremerosa and Leonardo Espinosa. So Ann?
I didn't recognize her.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Are these three other Ann's with you?
These are some people that I'm very proud of and I'm excited to introduce you tonight.
Great.
I was really thinking that maybe I'd be here tonight inviting you all for a tour of the new space, you know. Actually, I thought I'd be here a couple weeks ago doing that, maybe in a few more weeks. Okay? You know, that's the way construction is, right? But tonight is really something even more special. As you know, I, you know, I have a multiple personality kind of a thing. I help entrepreneurs through MYB and the Santa Maria Business Development Center, but I also teach them at Hancock. And through my role at Hancock, I've got lots of different colleagues. And one of my very good friends at Hancock is Mandy Schultz, and she teaches the graphic design program. And she has a class that is the Design for Publication class. And these three lovely people were in that class. And one of their projects that they were gonna do this semester was to design logos for real entities. And I said, "Ooh, me, me, me." You know, "We need to have something designed for the Business Development Center." And so these young people, Estrella Torres, Glenn Torres, and Andrew Watson, were on Team Green. That's how it started out. They actually had a couple other members on the team. And I got the cream of the crop, right? The cream rose to the top. And so we met several times, and they asked what my vision was for a logo, and I said, "Hmm, you know, kinda, you know. You know, just kinda." And just like any other business person would say, "I don't know." But they were given a couple of pieces of input. They knew what the logo was for MYB, and how that came about. Actually, their instructor, Mandy Schultz, had designed that. So they knew where that font kind of thing came from. I also told them that the building that we're rehabbing and getting ready to move into is going to be christened and called the atrium because it just deserves to be called something. And so, other than that, have at it, have a good time. And so as we went through this process, they each were contributing pieces. I would meet with them and say, "Well, I like that piece, I like that piece, and I like that piece. Oh, and I like that piece, but maybe we could change that piece." And so as we went through it, they kept changing pieces, changing pieces, changing pieces. And they came up with what I think is an amazing logo. And you get to see it first. We figured that the City Council and the city staff, and those of you who were brave enough to come tonight, would be the ones who got to see this logo first. This is brand-new, fresh, just finished. And so why don't you turn it around? And so what we're really happy about is, first of all, this is a little bit of each of them. And the, we'll turn it around so you guys can see it too in a minute. You saw that the peak represents the atrium, right? And the, okay, I'm hurrying. The Santa Maria is, the script is commonly used for Santa Maria stuff, which kind of ties it back to us. And so it makes me feel really good that this project, that's really a community-based project, is, has a logo that is tied from Hancock and created by these students. And they're gonna autograph this for me. It's gonna hang at this Business Development Center, and hopefully, we'll see them there a lot. This is the future of Santa Maria. These are our future entrepreneurs, so.
So it's gonna be, it's gonna be called then the BDC then?
Yes, the Santa Maria Business Development Center.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and thank you, all three of you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council, city staff, and everyone else that came tonight. My name's Leonardo Espinosa, Jr., and I'm a local young leader here in the community. Tonight, I just wanted to make an announcement to invite all young people between the ages of freshman year to 25 to our next Youth Advisory Council meeting. It will be at the community room in the Discovery Museum, right at the corner, from 3:30 to 5:30 this Friday, the 20th. And yeah, just come on over, get to know what we're kind of doing. We're kind of just collaborating, getting together, getting some ideas of what we want to work on. And it's going good. It's kind of, we've got the ball rolling now. I know we've been talking about this for a while now, but we're finally getting some progress going. And so this Friday, we'll be doing nominations to create the board. I want to be teaching them, and as well myself, learn a little bit more about the Brown Act and Robert's Rules of Order, just kind of just getting us ready to really participate. And afterwards, walk over to the farmer's market. Yeah, so, thank you for having me.
Good. Thank you very much. Before we move on, Mr. Hayden, nothing? Okay.
I would like to mention this. I got a call from a gentleman, and I said last week I would mention it, but a gentleman called me and to let me know and wanted me to let the people of Santa Maria know that there is an IRS phone scam going around targeting mostly the elderly community. And he's asking us to send a warning to the community and at the City Council meeting, which I'm doing now, and to let them know that they're getting, people, elderly are getting phone calls and saying that it's the IRS and their return phone. In fact, they got my son, so, and he's not elderly, and he thought that was really funny. But why don't we let you know?
I actually got one. They actually, they actually put, recorded it on the answer phone and basically said, "This is the IRS. You are, we are instigating a lawsuit. You must call this number." You know it's not the IRS because they would never give you anything but an 800 number. It's a 202 area code or something like that. But yeah, no, it's a real deal, so that's a, that's a good announcement.
So all of you can be aware out there. Estrella?
Yeah, I've had, actually, I don't know, I guess because I'm older, but they keep dialing me up, and I keep sending them the money, but they... Anyway, it's strange, and I'll just say, it's a foreign-sounding voice that called me a couple of times, and it was kind of like, "You are evidently a foreigner calling on behalf of the IRS." So I would pass that on because it is, you know, you hear, "They're going to take you to court, and they're gonna come and arrest you," and all the other stuff. And so I just take my Glock and go, "Click, click. Did you hear that? Come on down."
So now that you've been warned, don't send any more money, okay?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. So this concludes public comment portion of the agenda. Now we'd like to invite our Utilities Director, Mr. Springer, to give us an update on the city's water conservation effort. Mr. Springer?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, I'm giving you the monthly update on where we're at with conservation numbers. As you can see here in the first slide, the important thing with the super complicated slide that me and Steve Con like, because he's an engineer like me, is that the black line is above the yellow line. So that is our cumulative conservation to date, and the yellow line indicates our goal from the state. So the good news is, is that our cumulative conservation since June of last year has put us above the amount required by the state. You will also notice that the blue bar right below that is slightly less than the red, indicating that we didn't quite achieve the 16% savings. And the next slide with the water drop shows what we actually did conserve. We were at about 15.1%. So we're a little under, but overall, as you can see by the blue line, is above the total required for April. So to date, we were to conserve 688, or 649 million gallons, and we've saved 688 million gallons since June of last year. So that's a real testament to the community. The last slide is just to show that we, you know, El Nino's pretty much over, and we did not even get to an average year or normal year. We're at 70% normal. Kachuma is quite low. There's news stories frequently about the concerns with water on the South Coast. In the Santa Maria Valley, we have good news. We have a very large groundwater basin. And secondly, something I wanted to bring up tonight is that the state water allocation has been updated to 60%. In light of that, for the rest of this calendar year, barring unforeseen circumstances, the city will be providing primarily state water. That is a higher-quality water with lower dissolved solids and less need for softeners. So I would encourage councilmembers and the public to turn off their softeners. It will save them money throughout the summer, and also because of the backwashing that happens with water softeners, it will also help conserve water. So that ends tonight's report.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Springer?
Well, just a comment because of the water softeners and that outflow going to our wastewater treatment plant is not a positive. And so I would really encourage the public to pay heed to that, to cut that back or cut it out and see how it goes because the state water certainly reduces the solids, and scraping of the glass and your appliances and those kinds of things reduces significantly when you're, because we're providing that, quite frankly.
Well, I kept warning everyone about El Nino, so next year, if this happens again, they're not gonna listen to me because I really thought this was, I was convinced this was gonna be the big one.
I was, too.
But thank you, Mr. Springer. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendars are approved by roll-call vote. With one motion, these items are discussed only on the request of councilmembers.
Thank you. Before we move on, do any councilmembers have items they wish to pull for discussion?
Madam Mayor, I'll be recusing myself from item 3D.
3D.
Madam Mayor, same with me. Item 3D, I will recuse myself.
Do I have a motion? The consent?
I'll move for the adoption of the consent calendar with the exclusion of item C.
I'll second.
That's item D.
Three D.
Pardon me, I'm sorry. D.
Okay, that's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye.
Okay, I'll move for the adoption of the consent calendar, item D.
I'll second.
Okay. Item 3D is, there's... Item 3D is, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing done. Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ora?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Requiem.
Councilmember Boyson?
Epstein.
And Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider recommendations of the planning commission to adopt resolutions approving the negative declaration and general planned land use policy map designation of 5.5 acre site located on the north side of Battles Road, west of South Blosser Road, from neighborhood commercial to high-density residential 22DAC designation, and introduce ordinances amending the Blosser Southwest Pacific Plan and the zoning map from plan development convenience commercial to plan development high-density residential zoning district.
The staff report is being made by community development director, Mr. Opel.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council members, just show you the project site, get familiarized with it. The South Blosser Road on the east side, La Brea Avenue on the north, Battles on the south, and the Heritage Residential Project that's under construction here. And then, the entire site that we're talking about tonight is the 13-plus acres that kind of follows this shape. And what we're looking to do is consider changing this back section to residential to allow for the senior housing project. Three things tonight, a general plan amendment, as the clerk read, specific plan amendment, and then a rezone, which would allow all of these actions to turn into a really nice project. Just again to see, this would be commercial in the front, so we still have room for about 65,000 square feet of commercial, small neighborhood center. And then, this rear area would be where the senior housing project would be located. Some of the project components are the site size, five and a half acres, access from both sides, La Brea and Battles, 193 senior units with full kitchens, a pool and a clubhouse with numerous amenities. If you had a chance to see either of the other Tobes projects that have been built recently, it's going to be very similar to that. Significant reductions in traffic from what we had originally anticipated with the shopping center. And then, a pedestrian access that would allow residents from the Heritage Center to be able to cut through this project and get to the commercial, so they wouldn't have to drive if they didn't want to. There's a really nice meandering sidewalk that works its way east, west to east through the entire Heritage Project, and now, we'll be able to traverse through this project to get to the future shopping center. And this, I always like to give you kind of a preview of what things are going to look like because you're really only taking care of the changed land use element and the rezoning and all. But this is the layout of the project. Building six is the clubhouse and associated amenities and stuff, and then, there are five residential buildings within the project. And then, showing it all together with the commercial center in the front, this is the new layout, is how they believe it will go now. They'll have one large or a major commercial building, and then, some smaller pads along here and a couple inline commercial lots, buildings in the back with the senior facility right here. This is another view of the property. Tobes has done some really nice work in town, and we expect this to look just like the others. Under the sequel review, we didn't have to have a traffic study because the change from commercial to residential, there are going to be about an 81% reduction in traffic for the peak hour. We conducted a site visit in November and didn't come across any bugs or bunnies that were going to be an issue. And then, the air quality section was prepared, and all of the impact levels were below thresholds. But we still have a set of conditions from APCD for the grading of the site. And then, the planning commission took action on April 20th. They considered the staff report, the ND, and public comments, and ended up voting 5-0 to recommend approval to you of the ND, the GPZ, and the SBZ with resolutions for each. So if you go forward tonight and make a recommendation or approve the first reading of these ordinances and resolutions, we'd come back in three weeks instead of two, just because of the calendar, on June 7th. And then, it would return to the planning commission on June 15th for final action on the PD. And then, at that point, it's up to the developer to submit their plans to move forward for construction. And there's a repeat of your recommendations from the staff report. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, the recommendations are up there, and I believe the applicants here.
Any questions of Mr. Opel?
No, I just had one question on your second slide, on the layout. Of the project? Here you go. No, sorry. Yeah, no, maybe it's not.
This one here?
Third, yeah, or the third slide that you had showing the basic layout. Number slide number, yeah, there you go. There's a finger growing up there, just a, almost like a flaglot type thing.
Right there?
Yeah. We're not creating a no-man's land up there of alleyway or?
We needed a secondary access, and so, that's an access point right now, one way out for the seniors.
But it's a, it is going to be an actively-used exit. Is it going to be a regular road or?
Oh. Do you know how wide?
Yeah. It's like a private driveway.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks.
And it exits onto what street, Mr. Opel?
Exits onto La Brea.
La Brea?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. Is the applicant here, and would they like to make any comment?
Yes.
Good evening.
Thank you. Mayor Patino and members of the city council. My name's Craig Minus, and I'm the director of project management for the Tobes Group. I'm joined here tonight with our planning consultant, Lori Temore, with the Urban Planning Concepts. Michael Tobes will be here himself tonight, but his schedule currently takes him out of the state. We think staff did a very nice job presenting the item before you, including the land use amendments and environmental document for the Westgate Seniors apartment community. Just to recap, you know, with your blessing tonight, we will return to your council on June 7th for the second reading of the ordinances, and then, return to the planning commission for review and approval of the final plan development permit. I'd like to give Lori the opportunity for any final remarks, but I'm available for any questions that you may have tonight. I can articulate on the driveway if you'd like. It is a, the right-of-way is about a 20-plus-foot right-of-way. It would be a one-way exit for the senior residents and a pedestrian sidewalk that would also take you out to La Brea. We've done very similar at other projects. Sienna has a similar component. Our Hancock Terrace has a similar component. It's just another way to continue the movement out of the project. Thank you. Lori, did you have any other remarks?
Any questions? Ms. Temore?
Thank you. Lori Temore with Urban Planning Concepts with the Tobes Group. And we did review all of the documents provided by staff and the environmental document, and it were consistent with most of the goals and policies of the city, and we look forward to the approval of this project. And as Craig mentioned, this connection is for the safety of the community, and it is one-way onto La Brea with a right turn out. So, it's been reviewed by the city staff, Public Works, and I think we're satisfied with the design.
Thank you. Is there going to be a gate there?
There is going to be a gate. The pedestrian gate will be open for people to access, but it'll only be for emergencies that it should be used.
Thank you. Any questions?
I do.
Ms. Waterfield?
In this diagram up here, what is that house located in the top right-hand corner?
That's just a mechanic, an area for the--
Storage or?
Maintenance.
Maintenance, okay, fantastic.
We have one similar to that in, or actually, two, I think, in Sienna.
I was just curious when I saw that up there, but my main question was about the marketplace. How soon do you think that will be going up? And do you have any clients in line?
Yeah, you know, we continually market the Westgate Marketplace. ICSC, we're at all the conventions. You know, we just are still struggling to get an anchor interest. That's really what needs to take place first. Our Major A on the site plan, which is a larger building, we anticipate that would be the initial interest with, you know, such, you know, a CVS or some major kind of anchor tenant, and then, we'd have others to follow. So, it's actively marketed with, you know, a commercial real estate person. We continue to strive interest, but at this point, I don't have any time to answer for you.
Would a grocery store go there? I don't know if the Walmart down the street would be any, would be included in your demographics for all those houses in that area. There seems to be a whole lot of homes moving up.
Yeah, that's what our hope is. You know, we say with more rooftops, it becomes more interest.
Right.
And so, that's what we would, you know, we would be open to a grocery store. Again, it's that, kind of that major that would then have other uses kind of follow the majors to.
Yeah.
But, yeah, we're hopeful as the Westgate area continues to get more rooftops, that there'll be more commercial interest as well.
That Arco right there across the street is busy all the time. Oh, my gosh, they're just busting out at the seams, and so, you need to give them some relief.
Understood.
Okay. Any questions?
I have one question. Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that. Mr. Opel, you talked about Heritage then having access to the commercial site. Is that going to be through pathways, sidewalks, bike paths?
It's a sidewalk, yeah. It can be used for bikes or pedestrians, but it just runs along the edge of the property, right where the laser is, and would give you access then into the shopping center.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Madam Kirk, do you have any written correspondence?
Madam Mayor, we do not.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Kirk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition of the item?
We have no requests to speak.
Okay. Then, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Okay, Madam Mayor, if I can, and I'd like to roll these into a continual motion, if I can.
Sounds good.
I'd like to move for the adoption of resolution number 2016-61 to be adopted approving the negative declaration of Westgate Senior Housing Project located north side of West Battles Road, west of South Blosser Road, and also, adopt resolution number 2016-62 to be adopted amending the land use policy map for approximately 5.5 acres located north side of West Battles Road and east of South Blosser Road, and also, to approve ordinance number 2016-11 to be introduced for first reading and continued to the next meeting for second reading, adoption, approving the amendments to the Blosser Southwest Pacific Plan for approximately 5.5 acres located north of Battles Road, west of Blosser Road, and also, to adopt ordinance number 2016-12 to be introduced for the first reading and continued to the next reading for second reading and adoption, amending the official zoning map on approximately 5.5 acres located on the north side of West Battles Road, west of South Blosser Road.
And Madam Mayor, I'll second resolution number, no, I'm just kidding.
You're going to second, 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 and second.
I think the blood was drained from my face. Okay. It's been moved to the second to approve resolution number 2016-61, resolution number 2016-62, ordinance number 2016-11, and ordinance 2016-12. Madam Kirk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Ora?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
Our next item is another public hearing. Madam Kirk, could you please read the title?
The city council will consider adopting a resolution approving the 2015 urban water management plan and direct the director of utilities or his designee to file the plan with the California Department of Water Resources within 30 days of adoption in accordance with Assembly Bill 797.
Staff report is being made by utilities director, Mr. Springer.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Tonight, basically, we're holding a public hearing to receive public comment on the urban water management plan. Following that public comment, we're requesting that the city council adopt a resolution approving the urban water management plan and directing staff to file the same. Urban water management plans are required by state statute, and they are developed under guidance from the State Department of Water Resources. The city of Santa Maria adopted its first urban water management plan in 1988 and has re-adopted about five times since then. The Department of Water Resources provided guidance for the 2015 urban water management plan in January of 2016, and that is why tonight in 2016, we're adopting the 2015 plan. Same thing happened in 2011 when we adopted the 2010 plan. Just the nature of the beast. The draft urban water management plan that was circulated with city council meets all of the Department of Water Resources criteria. Primarily, what has happened with this particular urban water management plan is it's been updated with new population projections, changes since the last five years. Basically, it is projecting, using the SP-CAG population projections, that at 2040, the city of Santa Maria would be around 141,000 people. The water use projections have also historically been evaluated, then we looked at future projections. Interestingly, in 2005, the city of Santa Maria produced almost 14,000 acre-feet of production water. In 2015, after 10 years of growth, our number had reduced to 12,300 acre-feet. So even though we had seen 10 years of growth from 2005 to 2015, our water production had dropped by almost 1,600 acre-feet in that time. We are projecting out to 2040 that will go from the 12,000 acre-feet that we have now to close to 20,000. Interestingly, that number is a reduction because our gallons per person per day has gone down significantly. As you may recall, the city had a goal to reduce its production 20% by 2020, as required by the state. We have already exceeded that goal, particularly with the conservation we've seen in the last year. Our water use gallons per person per day in Santa Maria in 2005 was 133. Last year, it was 108. So as you can see, 25 gallons per person per day, less use, is a pretty significant savings. So, the urban water management plan also updates the sources of supply, the two sources of supply that you're all familiar with in Santa Maria, which is the groundwater, including the rights the city holds to twitchal yield, as well as our state water project return flows that we have out at the wastewater plant, and then, of course, the state water. Given the drought in the last few years, they did require quite a bit of focus on various dry year scenarios. There are multiple scenarios for dry years, including like the single driest year, as well as consecutive dry years. I'm happy to report that in each of those scenarios, based on our projections of availability of state water and the reliability of the groundwater aquifer, the city has adequate supply capable to meet its demand in each of those scenarios going out to build out. And that concludes staff's report. I'm sorry, I didn't have a PowerPoint. I tried to condense 261 pages to a concise PowerPoint and failed miserably.
I wish they'd do that at the state and federal level. Anyway, any questions for Mr. Springer?
Wait.
Mr. Boyson?
Go ahead. I was just going to maybe make a comment and a question. I'm not sure if you have the numbers, but first of all, it, being involved with Central Coast Water Authority, I do hear our neighbors to the south and that a lot of their meetings tend to be surrounded, their council meetings tend to be surrounded, "Where are we going to get more water? What are we going to do with, you know, water supply and this sort of thing?" Which, it's kind of a pleasure that we concern ourselves with more important things, hopefully. But the question that I did have, you mentioned that our average usage per person of 108 gallons, how does that compare with some of our other cities?
I'm sorry, I don't have that number in front of me to kind of compare. I do know, it's tough to compare over the last year. Some of the communities on the south coast are seeing conservation numbers in the 40% to 50% range. Quite frankly, once you get down to, you know, in the mid-80s range of gallons per person per day, you're, that's kind of the minimum amount required for what they consider, you know, access to drinking water and cleaning water and doing that sort of thing. So, at 108 gallons per person per day, this is a very good number for historical purposes.
And I do know that in other discussions, it's substantially less than a lot of the cities in the south coast. I know Montecito was up there at like 580 gallons per person per day. Yeah, but, you know, it's a, they have huge estates and very few people and all that sort of thing, but still, it shows you the difference. But anyways, thank you, Mr. Springer.
Ms. Waterfield?
My question was, you indicated in your earlier report that the City of Santa Maria is going to be getting 60% of its water from state. Is that correct?
I'm sorry to clarify, the state water allocation is 60%. That means we get 60% of our entitlement. The city's entitlement is roughly 17,000 acre feet, so 60% of that is going to provide the city a little over 10,000 acre feet. We intend to provide roughly 12,000 acre feet, so actually 10,000, about 80-some percent will be state water this year. So we will be pumping maybe 2,000 acre feet of groundwater out of this basin, so a very small amount.
And so, and the report says that we have an ample amount of water that's just going to take care of any type of drastic scenario that would happen in the state of California?
Based on the scenarios that they've asked us to look into, a couple of years ago, our state water allocation was only 5%, so we primarily relied on the groundwater basin. As I mentioned previously, the groundwater basin in the Santa Maria Valley is very robust, so that's an excellent opportunity for us. So based on the scenarios that the Department of Water Resources required us to go through, our water supplies were ample to meet our needs. The primary concern that we would have in an immediate shortage would be something as if a major earthquake and we were without power for 10 days to two weeks where our generators start to run out of fuel or things of that nature. And there are provisions in here where we indicate how we would notify the public and we certainly have the reverse 911 system and that sort of thing to let our residents and businesses know, you know, the immediate need.
Okay, and another question is that since El Nino didn't really show up this year, but it seemed like northern California got more rain and snow than usual, did that help our percentage of state water for this year?
Absolutely. The allocation, as I mentioned in our, previously, we didn't even make it to an average year down here, and it's drier the further south we go. There are significant water storage right now in reservoirs north of the Delta. Frankly, if it were more like a normal year where there'd be more snowpack on the southern Sierra, I would anticipate that our state water allocation would be even higher. There are a lot of restrictions on pumping water through the Delta. You might see on the headlines regarding Delta smelt and that sort of thing. So based on all of the biological opinions, there's windows for pumping. The rainwater came late this year. We had very large storms in northern California in the February and March timeframe, so that limited when the Department of Water Resources kind of determined when to pump water. But the rainfall absolutely was a help in our allocation this year.
Great, and I had one more question, and it just escaped for me, and I'll get back to you on that one, but it was important. Rhonda was coughing and I got worried about her.
Any other questions, Ms. Zuniga? Mr. O'Rourke?
Yeah, I'd like to make some comments. Thank you for the excellent 60% allocation, and just to remind everyone that, you know, we started this process of bringing state water back in '86 and the controversy from around communities around our area that were opposed to it, and I think even individuals that it has proved to be liquid gold, so to speak, for us at this particular time. Another thing, not just with our water, but also our solid waste division and now our runoff management proposal, and Jack just put his book away, to compile all of that on an ongoing basis, along with the larding on of the bureaucracy, you know, $60,000, $70,000 per study and the time and energy that our staff put into those kinds of things is phenomenal. And it's hard for people to visualize what they jump through to try and keep us in compliance with the state, the county, the feds, and everybody else, and so I just commend you for what you guys do and the advertising, the other things, and our transportation system, because I see we're sitting over here talking about that too, but it's just, it is absolutely phenomenal, and I think, I want to commend the city on its participation in reducing usage. And, you know, I think I've indicated that my wife and I save the first 10 seconds of water from the shower every time we shower, and that equates to three to five gallons for watering plants outside that we would have flushed out the system. So I know I do check for our personal consumption, and I think if everyone takes that tack going forward, we're going to be in good shape. And so my hat's off, and it's just, when you're putting in as much money now that we do for these reports, that maybe somebody in Sacramento looks at and gives us a stamp of approval, although it's last year's study that we're doing, finishing up this year. That's all.
Okay, Ms. Waterfield?
I remember, I remember. So when we had, because of the shortage of the water and the heat and all that, do you know if the state made any provisions to not let the stinky water occur again that came through our pipelines?
Oh, that's right.
Because I know someone's going to ask me that question, and I just want to have the answer.
Unfortunately, the offensive water still meets drinking water standards. It's a function of remnants of an algal bloom, so what happens is with the warm weather and, let's say, lower flows in the channel that basically follows Interstate 5, there is that potential. It does happen periodically, usually it's very late in the fall when it happens to be warm weather. The difficulty last year was with lower allocations, there was just less water flowing through the system, so more sunlight was able to get down into the canals and that sort of thing, so it led to larger algal blooms. I'm optimistic that this year, with higher state water allocations and more water moving, we will have less of an issue.
So it's a combination of Mother Nature and then releasing more state water?
Right, because the quicker the water moves through the system, the less opportunity for the algae to grow. To be very clear, that aroma and taste is not algae, it is remnants from an algal bloom. I just want to make that clear.
It smells like King Tut's tomb.
And if you don't mind, I would appreciate tagging on to Councilman O'Rourke's comment. I would, I really want to recognize the staff in the Utilities Department, in particular, Lisa Long and Shannon Sweeney, put this report together. Five years ago, the City of Santa Maria paid a consultant in the neighborhood of $60,000 to research this information and put it together, and they went through, researched all the information, put it together, drafted this up. Michelle Ruiz and my office put it together in this format so that it's ready to go, and that was done essentially with no overtime and no additional expense to the city. So we are really trying to keep our eye on expenses, particularly given conservation in the water fund, so I would be remiss if I didn't recognize that staff, your staff, for doing a great job on that.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you to the staff.
Relay our thanks to them, please, Mr. Springer. Madam Clerk, do you have any written correspondence?
No, Madam Mayor, I do not.
I'd like to open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do you have any requests to speak in favor or in opposition?
No requests to speak.
So I'll close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Madam Mayor, I make the motion to adopt Resolution Number 2016-63 to be adopted approving the 2015 urban water management plan.
Second.
It's been moved in second to adopt Resolution Number 2016-63. Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor?
Aye.
Now we have a regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve the monument concept to be used for the "Welcome to Santa Maria Gateway Monument" sign, and adopt a resolution detailing the selection, funding, and maintenance of the monument based on Caltrans requirements.
The staff report is being made by Director of Public Works, Mr. Kahn.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I am very pleased to bring this before you for the concept selection for the "Welcome to Santa Maria Gateway Monument" sign. I'd like to give you a little background exactly what a gateway monument sign is. It's a sign that's used to identify to travelers that they are entering Santa Maria and are welcomed to visit. Caltrans has guidelines for these signs because the sign will be located in Caltrans right-of-way. So the maximum width of the sign would be 20 feet, it'd be made of durable material, and the city will be responsible for all maintenance of the sign. There are other guidelines that are published in their report. We've acquired Caltrans preliminary approval for the proposed gateway monument sign location. When we have the selected sign, we'll submit construction documents back to Caltrans for final approval. This is a vicinity map that is the area the city has selected and Caltrans has approved. It is in the Highway 101-Broadway Interchain, so it's right in this area right here. The sign is visible for travelers traveling southbound on US 101, so the sign right in here, so here's Broadway, here's the bridge, here's US 101, and the sign is proposed to be right in this location right here. This is the site plan for the sign. The proposal is to place fill right in this area right here at the existing bank on the Broadway overcrossing. This will raise the sign up for a good line of sight and create fill material for a foundation that we could do a more cost-effective foundation than having to bore down through the existing fill. So I'd like to present the three concepts for you. The material of the main sign body for all the signs is a smooth mission plaster with off-white to match the city hall. So that's, this area right here would be a smooth plaster. Then, the sign base of all the signs is a rough cast stucco texture, that's this thing right here, painted to blend with the native plannings. Concept A draws inspiration from the tower elements of the city hall, right in this area right here, and the blue and yellow tile work is incorporated into the roof of the monument tower feature, along with the city ship logo on the side right here. So that's Concept A. Concept B is modeled after the city clay tile gable roof on the city hall building. The city ship and logo with blue and yellow tiles surrounding it are on the side of the tower element. So this is the tower element I'm talking about, and this is Concept B. Concept C is a symmetrical design with two matching towers, elements on either side of the sign, right here and here, and then in the center is the ship logo right in the center of that sign. We brought this item before the Planning Commission, and they recommended Concept A, which is shown on the exhibit in front of you right here. So, council actions tonight. First of all, I ask you to select a preferred concept. Second of all, I ask you to approve the resolution that I'll be submitting to Caltrans. The resolution designates a selected concept that you choose tonight, accepts the maintenance of the monument, and also authorizes myself to submit an encroachment permit to Caltrans to place the gateway monument sign in the location shown here tonight. So with that, we'll have some discussion. You have a selection of either selecting Concept A, which is shown on the screen, Concept B, or Concept C, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have about this. Thank you.
Any questions of Mr. Kahn right now?
I do. So how long will it take to go through Caltrans?
We're hopeful not long because we have the preliminary approval. What we'll do is we'll complete construction documents of the selected design and we'll submit to Caltrans. I would anticipate it'll take at least a month to get through Caltrans for the approval. And with the same time, we'd be bidding the document to contractors, hopefully starting construction this summer.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Madam Mayor, yeah, this is interesting because, serving on the All-America City Committee, and it's too bad Rosie's not here, she could tell us the exact date, that a couple of years ago, we studied these designs, and part of the problem was that we didn't have any money and would have to come to the city and finally, the designs have come, and we're, hopefully, we're moving forward with this, and I think it's neat. One of the things that we were looking at, actually, and I guess there was twofold, was to move the sign closer to the bridge entering Santa Maria rather than there at the overcrossing for North Broadway, given the fact that maybe someday there's going to be a quill overleaf if and when projects get developed on the east side of 101. And I'm sure you guys are smart enough, you can move a sign.
Yes, we are.
And so while I'm at it, I'll give you my two cents.
Okay, just questions right now, and then we'll come back for discussion, okay? Any other questions?
I have one clarifying question. So, Mr. Hayden, we don't actually have the money yet, right, until we approve our new budget?
That's true.
We do have money set aside for this fiscal year. However, the project costs will be exceeding the money that we have in there right now, so we're asking for additional funding, and that will be coming forward with the budget as well.
Right, so that'll give Caltrans some time to...
Excuse me?
That'll give Caltrans some time. We can work with Caltrans while we're waiting to approve our new budget.
Exactly.
Mr. Boyson, you have a question?
Mr. Hayden, the way I read the staff report, that all of the funding would come out of the Business Attraction Loan Fund, is that correct, or will some of it be coming out of the general plan?
It will be coming out of the Business Attraction Loan Fund, Mr. Boyson.
Okay, thank you.
So, Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor.
No written communications?
Neither.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the council now for discussion. Okay, Mr. O'Rourke?
Okay, well, I do like elements of, all of them actually, I guess, but getting approval from my wife and others that I've talked to, a little bit different ballgame. I guess I do like C in its, I'll say, simplicity because people going 80 miles an hour don't have a lot of time, in my mind, to check things out, and the tower element that people may not know of our beautiful city hall here, I don't know if that means much, but I like C in that it has our ship, but the one thing that I do like on A is 1905, and I think other communities that I've seen, they have the date, and all I would say is I would favor C with the inclusion, some way, shape, or form, of our 1905 as our city coming to be. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor? Ms. Zuniga?
So, you know, I too like all of the designs. I think, going to Mr. O'Rourke's point, I think that C is kind of what you see, pretty standard, right? It's symmetrical. I like A because it's asymmetrical, so it's going to draw your eye to it, it's not just the square thing that you're going to pass like you pass in most other cities, and that it has 1905. I think that all of our focus on, you know, trying to maintain some historical, you know, for our community, I think that kind of lends itself to that, so I prefer the asymmetrical sign because I think it's going to draw more people's eye to it, and I like the personalization of it and that it has our year.
Ms. Waterfield?
Okay, all of these signs are great. They're very nice. I just noticed the tower sign at 101 in Bed Arabia, which is really nice, and the odd thing about that is that I didn't notice it coming onto Bradley, but I noticed it on 101 when it was on the other side of the freeway, so that was a great design, and I think that it will incorporate with the monument concept of A because you do have that pointed tower element, and I do like Concept A because it includes everything. It includes the city hall, it includes 1905, it has the Spanish structure, and I just think it's a very neat monument. My preference is Concept A.
Mr. Boyson?
Well, first of all, my wife will tell you, I don't have a lot of design class.
Yeah, you don't have taste.
She doesn't have taste, that's obvious, but...
So we're not going to take your vote on this?
No, 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 but the CPA in me tells me that I would go with Concept C because it could be seen for half a second longer and for a few more feet, but as Mr. O'Rourke says, who goes 65 miles an hour on Highway 101? So I'm gonna go with Ms. Zuniga and Ms. Waterfield and select A and pretend that I knew what I was doing.
I thought you were going to say it was all malice, so there was going to be the two men and the two women, and I just abstained.
Madam Mayor, I just, I was kidding on what I said. Actually, I like A.
Okay, there you have it. Okay, so do I hear a motion?
I'll move for, do we have to include the concept, Mr. Hayden, in the, okay. I'll move for the adoption of Resolution 2016-64, approving the installation of maintenance and maintenance of a gateway monument along US 101 within...
and, and maintenance of a gateway monument along US 101 within the California State right-of-way and authorizing the Director of Public Works or his designee to execute and execute an encroachment permit with the state of California and incorporate in the design Concept A.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to adopt Resolution 2016-64, including Exhibit A. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
No, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Hayden?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, I think you may want to ask for public input before we take, take item. No, we did.
I did.
Oh, you did?
I did.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Put the cell phone down.
Never mind. I'll be like Mr. O'Rourke.
I cut Mr. O'Rourke off when he was commenting, and I asked for public input, yes. Okay, Madam Clerk, it's all yours. Councilmember Suniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, please. Aye. Next door to the business is another regular business item. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will introduce an ordinance amending Title 8 to add Chapter 18 implementing rules of conduct and an exclusion process for public transit systems.
Okay, we have Director of Public Works, Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tonight, I'd like to ask our Transit Manager, Austin Odell, to give his report. Austin is intimately involved in the operation of the Transit Center, all the buses and all the bus stops, and he would be most qualified to give this report.
Thank you. Mr. Odell?
Thank you, Steve. Madam Chair, members of the council, I'm here tonight to introduce the proposed amendment to the municipal code for the transit rules of conduct. What I'd like to first provide is some context as far as what transit mission, the Transit Division's mission is to provide. First, provide excellent public transit service, customer service to the bus rider, an extensive transit bus work, a network in Santa Maria Valley, safe and reliable service, and facilities and services that not only attract or maintain our loyal customers, but attract new riders. But there's a problem. There's a recent growing problem at the Transit Center and at certain bus stops. There's loitering, vagrancy, loud music, harassing of customers, smoking, vandalism. And right now, I'd like to focus on the first three bullets. I think first thing we need to understand is that the Transit Center is, and the bus stops are a place of business. It's a place where bus customers come to our transit stops and Transit Center to come pay fare in a safe and reliable, safe and secure location, board the bus, and go on their way. But when there are people who are loitering, playing loud music, asking for money, asking for food, smoking, playing loud music, it's intimidating for the bus rider. We actually have reports on people who are loitering, who are making unwelcome comments that are inappropriate for, you know, to males and, and females. It makes it a very intimidating environment. The other issue is currently the municipal code does not provide rules for our city public, for our city rangers to enforce because there are no existing rules. So these behaviors create an unpleasant environment and discourage use of our public transit system. So what is the, what is the answer? What is the solution? It's very simple. Authorize rules of conduct for our transit system. These rules would be similar of, rules of conduct for the, that's, we currently have for the transit, for the library, sorry. They make, make it a violation for loitering at our transit stops and Transit Center, make it a violation for smoking, creating loud noises, and other unwelcome behaviors. They provide city rangers, police, and staff the authority to enforce rules. And there, the rules of conduct would include two types of violations. One is a minor violation. These could include as simple as a verbal warning or a written comment or a written warning, which basically state that they're breaking the rules. Either they're smoking, they're loitering, they're harassing, they're harassing passengers. There's also serious violations. These violations are distinguished by the person, distinguished as violent or violent, they include violent or confrontational or threatening type of behaviors. So what are the benefits? The benefits are promote safety and security for bus, bus passengers and staff, create a pleasant atmosphere for bus, bus passengers, and encourage transit use. Any questions?
Any questions of the council? Okay, golly. Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, we have no requests to speak.
Okay, do we have any written communications?
No, ma'am.
Okay, so I'll bring the item back to the council for discussion or a motion.
Well, I'll...
Madam Mayor, I was just going to say, I am supportive of this. I hope that this doesn't, I, I know that we had some unintended consequences when we tried to ban certain sizes of things from going into the library and this sort of thing. But after having discussed this with our city manager and with staff, I, I think this is very important, that we have very, very specific rules that we encourage public transportation, especially in the Transit Center area with the new Topes project over there and this sort of thing. It's in serious need of being cleaned up. So I'm very supportive of this, and we'll be happy to either provide a motion or if any of the other council members have any comments?
Any, any comments?
I have, I just have one, yes. I just, you know, I know that there was some discussion about people using the bathrooms at the Transit Center for laundering and for washing and all of that. So I think this is an opportunity for us to just kind of have a discussion about. That is one of the things that we can mitigate without having to go to code compliance. I know that there are several projects already in the community that provide, you know, clothes washing services and also showers. And so I think that we can work to engage more in our community doing that. I know there are several churches that want to do the portable showers, and so maybe we could actually have portable showers available, you know, seven days a week if we just, you know, find a way to engage those that want to address that. And that way, it'll reduce that hopefully at the Transit Center and other locations without having to have code compliance and, you know, involved in that. Thank you.
Ms. Waterfield, do you have a comment?
I don't have any comments.
Okay, I'm, I am very supportive of this because I think we, we put a lot of money into our public transportation, and it's to be used for a purpose because people cannot drive. And so I am very supportive of this, that people aren't being intimidated or being harassed at, or at the bus stops. Because we see a lot of times where people are laying on the, on the benches at the bus stops or in putting all of their belongings there, and a lot of people will not even go to the bus stops because of that. And I've had that complaint, so I'm very supportive of this. So...
Okay, I'll, Madam Mayor, if you'll allow me, I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance Number 2016-13 to be introduced for the first reading and continued to the next meeting for second reading and adoption, adding Chapter, Chapter 8-18 Rules of Conduct and Exclusion Process for Public Transit Systems.
It's been moved in second to introduce Ordinance 2016-13. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll? Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember Suniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye.
And now we have our last regular business item this evening. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will receive the third quarter financial report of 2015-16 ending March 31, 2016.
Staff report is to be made by Administrative Services Director, Mr. Vizet.
Good evening, I'm the mayor, council member, staff, and the public. I'll be briefly go over the quarterly financial report for the third quarter ended March 31 of 2016. Once again, I'll be primarily reviewing the general and enterprise funds. As we stated last time, the beginning fund balance of $10,122,000 is the audited fund balance at $7,115 of the general fund. Concerning city revenues through the third quarter of the year, sales tax receipts are $577,000 greater than last fiscal year. Strong new auto sales and gains in consumer goods are the category showing the majority of activity. Automobile demand remains a mainstay for manufacturing. Over partially offsetting these, these increases are decline in sales tax from fuel and service stations due to the declining, low, and low fuel prices. NHIS revenue is the one that's kind of a scary thing right now. It's about 51% of budget at $927,000 with an annual budget of $1.8 million. This compares to receipts to the third quarter of last year of $2.3 million, and it appears that the low oil prices are resulting in declining NHIS revenues. At this point, we believe we'll receive about $1.2 million at year-end rather than the budgeted amount of $1.8 million. And it should be noted, the last fiscal year, we received $3.3 million. And I checked the revenue in April, and it was like $15,000. So we're at 942 right now versus a budget of $1.8 million. So I don't even think we're going to hit the $1.2 million by year-end, frankly. Permit revenue is doing very well, though, at $2.2 million and 96% of budget, which was $1.6 million last fiscal year at this time. Expenditures in the general fund are about 67% of budget, which is primarily due to budget savings from vacancies and departments holding down expenditures. Concerning Measure U, revenues through the third quarter are on budget at 75%, or $3.132 million, and expenditures are slightly lower at 72.1%. Through March, roughly 91% of all expenditures were public safety-related, with 45% spent on fire operations and 46% spent on police operations. The majority of funds so far have been spent on public safety activities. As for the enterprise funds, for the water and wastewater fund, revenues exceeded expenditures by $2.8 million, and expenditures also included the entire bond, bond amount of $4.6 million for the year. And for a solid waste fund, expenditures exceeded revenues by about $372,000 for the year. And that concludes my staff report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Vizet? None? Oh, Ms. Suniga?
I was just going to ask, so like when I look at the numbers, right, because I'm not a numbers person, I look at the percentages. So I see that on the Measure U, the administration fund is at 99.9, and I see your explanation for that. So we're not expecting to have any or many more expenditures on that line item?
No, that's it for the year.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any requests to speak?
No, Madam Mayor, we do not.
Bring it back to the council for discussion and/or a motion. Oh, just be receiving filed, okay. Okay, so the council has received an report, and it'll be filed with the Chief Deputy City Clerk. Next item will be reported by the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Your next meeting will be on the 7th of June, and we have a number of public hearings that evening. We also have a number of consent agenda items. We will be providing the City Council a copy of the 2016-18 proposed city budget. That way, we will be able to set the hearing for our next fiscal year budget come June the 21st. We'll be doing that on consent. We'll also have two second readings. One of them is the Westgate Senior Project that you had the first reading of this evening. The other one is amending the Santa Maria Municipal Code regarding the transit rules of conduct that the City Council just adopted. We will have a presentation on the meeting of the 7th of June, and that will be made by our fireworks task force. If you recall, a year ago, we had a number of residents come forward, and they had a concern regarding the use of fireworks in the city. The City Council made some changes to the municipal code. We adopted an administrative citation, $1,000 administrative citation. And since then, city staff has been coming up with mitigation measures to help reduce the use of illegal fireworks in the city. And we will be having a presentation from city staff, so the viewing public will know the measures that we're taking this 4th of July. We'll also be having three public hearings. One is a Tefra hearing, we've done those before in the past. Another one is going to be the first reading of a responsible pet owner's ordinance. We are the only city in Santa Barbara County that does not have a responsible pet owner's ordinance on the books for dogs and cats. We'll be bringing that before the City Council for consideration. And then also, we'll be having the appeal of the libertine brewing company. That went to the City Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission denied their conditional use permit, and they are now appealing that to the City Council. So that'll be before you on the 7th of June. So that concludes my staff report. Can I?
Thank you. Mr. O'Rourke?
Rick, can I ask you a question? When will we start advertising about the 4th of July and prohibiting so forth? Will that be early June?
Yes, they are already going out. Utility billing stuffers have been going out. We are working with the radio stations to place radio advertisements on both Spanish and English radio stations. We already have the PSAs. We're inking the contract as we speak with Edwards Theater, and they will be showing our PSAs before all the movies, starting Memorial Weekend. So we are in the process of going out and also canvassing certain, what we would refer to as hotspots in the city. We received a lot of complaints last year for illegal fireworks, and noticing those residents indicating that we have new procedures this year on the use of both safe and sane and prohibiting illegal fireworks.
Yeah, Mr. Hayden, if I might suggest, we might use the Friday, Downtown Friday Market to maybe get some information out, distribute some information through there, and maybe they're even willing to do a small commercial because they have, you know, DJ out there or something.
That's an excellent suggestion.
And the venues changed correctly for the fire, the live fireworks?
Yes, we are looking at changing the venue for the 4th of July Firework Show from the Fair Park to Pioneer Valley High School this year. And it will be more of a community fair, events going on all day that day. Open the pole at the high school for swimming, and we'll be having bands, and so it'll be more of a community function.
Oh, great. Mr. O'Rourke?
On the Friday night, Downtown Friday night, I know the code enforcement have a booth there, and I don't know if they're going to be there every weekend. So this might be an appropriate time to pass out flyers, you know, in conjunction with whoever mans the booth along with them.
We'll, we'll make sure that we have some flyers.
And sell avocados.
This Friday, pretty hot. Yes, I'll make a note.
Thank you. Okay, next item is oral reports of council members. Mr. Boyson, we'll start with you.
Sure. The only reportable item that I have, I did represent City Council at the Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness last Thursday at the Policy Council. They are formally requesting that we increase our contribution for the support of Central Coast Collaborative on Homelessness from $12,000 to $50,000 in the next budget year, and we will be discussing that when we have the budget come forward.
You say 12 to 50?
12 to 50, yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. O'Rourke? You don't have anything? Oh, Ms. Waterfield?
I have a reportable item. Last Wednesday, I had the pleasure of presenting the proclamation to the Memorial Police Officers' Day, and that was such a great, great event. This is the first time we had it, I believe, at the new police station. And so it was an excellent event. And I'd like to tag on with that and talk about, the Santa Maria Police Council is having their eighth annual golf tournament and a night of funny business, and I'd like to invite everybody to this. I'm sure you'll all be getting a invitation in the mail, and it's our eighth annual year. We raise money for the Santa Maria Police Department, and it goes to training, material things, and firearms equipment that keeps our officers safe, and we want to make sure they get home safely every day, every night, every morning. So this is an absolute great event to attend, and it's an all-day event. It's going to be on Monday, June the 6th. The golf tournament starts at 11 o'clock at Shotgun, and then later that evening, we're going to have a dinner, and comedian Ralph Harris, who is an excellent comedian, he does clean stuff, which is wonderful, so that's why we really like him, but he is, he is funny. He is a funny guy, and I would encourage everyone to participate. It's a, it's a great day. We have all sorts of great activities on the course that you can participate in, that you'll have a great time. It's not a typical golfing day, it's more of a... day, it's more of a great golfing day.
That's it. Ms. Sunega?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the National Day of Prayer, and I heard from many people that they thought that was one of the best ones we've had. People really enjoyed it and thought the program was really nice. And then, of course, we had the Unity and Community Event on Saturday, and Mayor, I saw you out there, came back from Washington and was out there, and that was good.
I wasn't feeling the jet lag yet.
And then, I staffed the Serve Santa Maria booth, so we had a lot of resource booths that were out there. And I just want to let people know of a couple of upcoming events is the Santa Barbara County Action SBCAN is having their Looking Forward Awards Dinner this coming up Sunday on the 22nd, and they're recognizing three locals, Patricia Solorio, Franca Lockhart, and then, of course, my dear friend, Joanne Marmalajo. And then, Community Action Commission is having their Champions Dinner on June 2, and they're honoring Fidenzio Bruno and Jackie Brunello and Lois Capps. And then, I just wanted to give really quickly a couple of shout-outs for our, over our last one Community Action Meeting. I just want to thank Senator Hannah Beth Jackson again for sending her local representative to the meetings. Senator Jackson has been really interested and has had a representative at several of our meetings and is interested in what way her office may be able to support our efforts here locally to help create a safer community and more opportunities for our young people. And then, of course, around that event, I also want to give a shout-out to Jason and the team at Recreation and Parks because they met with us several times and worked really hard to get that venue set up and tore down, and there were a couple of issues that came up that they handled and were very patient and helpful. And then, finally, we had about 200 soccer parents come out to the last one Community Action Committee meeting, talking about their desire to have more soccer fields to expand our recreational activities and for both their youth and young adults, so just wanted to let them know that that's a discussion that we've been having for a while and are hoping to make that happen for them. And that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. May 4, I attended the North County Subregional Meeting, and at noon, went to the Annual Tourism Luncheon with the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce. That evening, I was present at the Elk Student of the Year Awards and Citizen of the Year Awards. May 5, attended the National Day of Prayer event. The music is always so good and uplifting at that event. May 6, went to the 2016 North Santa Barbara County Economic Summit, went, had a meeting to discuss the North County at-Risk Task Force. On May 11, myself and city manager Hayden and our deputy city manager went to Washington, DC. We met with the, we went to the Pentagon, met with the Air Force Office of Installations, Environment and Energy Person, met with the Office of Senator Barbara Boxer, and met with staff members. We had a meeting with the community-oriented policing services for the cops hiring program. They were really interested in just some of the things we were doing here and how the community came out and even asked us to write an article for their newsletter. So, we met with the Federal Emergency Management Agency, met with the Economic Development Administration, met with the Environmental Protection Agency, the Office of Diane Feinstein, and of course, we met with Lois Capps and the Department of Transportation. And I think the important thing is when you're having face-to-face meetings with these people, and they're very helpful to tell you what they need in grants, and some of them actually read some of the grants, but they, some of them know where we are, but we need to tell them where Santa Maria is and what we are doing, the positive things we are doing and what we need to be doing. May 14, I went, I did the Unity and Community Prayer Walk, and then I went to the Women's Conference of the New Hope Missionary Baptist Church. And May 15, American General Media and Coast Collisions did a car giveaway to a young woman who is a student at Questa and has had health issues, and it was really, really nice. This man that owns Car Collisions wanted to do this. Went to a Sunday afternoon tea, and yesterday, went to the Hancock Terrace Ribbon Cutting. Those apartments are amazing, and Mr. Boyson was there to say that also. They're just beautifully done. And this morning, did the Ben Hayes Radio Show, and that is it. Anything else from the council? If not, council meeting is adjourned.